Welcome, folks. Welcome. We are being recorded thanks to a community group which is paying for this, which is great. Perhaps they could pay for doing this every time we meet. That would be lovely. We are going to change our agenda order a little bit because we've got some folks who have other things to do. Our town clerk is here to notarize some deed and we're going to do that at the very beginning to allow you to go. I think we are going to do the clerk's report first, though. Then we have Mike Merwicki, who I don't know if Mike is presenting the petition or whether one of you is.
No, Mike is.
Okay, so hopefully he will be here soon because we want to do that pretty early. But before we do that, we're going to do, if Frank is here, the Wilson Engineering action. But JJ is here to do the forest deed, so let's go ahead and -- well, let me interject. Is there anything else we need to do out of order?
No.
Okay, let's go ahead and approve the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes of the meeting on August 2nd, 2018.
Okay, any comments? The only thing I have, and I don't -- it's a 10-page.
It's huge.
It's awesome. Beautiful. You speak about the -- you wrote about the superintendent evaluation process. The lawyer who you mentioned, we should write her name down because she's a lawyer who works at the AOE who is actually supervising.
Oh, okay.
Running our process. So her name is Sue Klowow.
Siglowski.
Siglowski.
S-U-E-G.
Okay.
Sue Klowow.
I'll write it out and then --
Okay. I'll just add that into that portion of the 82 minutes in recent minutes.
Yeah, that's the only thing I have. Do you guys have -- hey, Sue.
Sorry for that.
Do you guys have any changes? We're talking about -- we're approving the minutes. Are you good?
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm staying. I guess I'll go through mostly now.
Okay. They passed, though. Hey, Frank?
Hello?
Come on over here.
All right.
Are you okay being there?
Sure.
So far from your team.
All right.
My computer might have to give a caution for power.
So we had, I know, one communication that was from Mike Merwicki, which was by us that a petition would be here. I think we should put the petition and his email letter in.
As attachments?
Yeah.
Did you get anything?
No, should I?
I'll do it.
Okay. Other than that, I think we're good.
Sorry.
So, as I indicated, we're going to start with the forest deed because we have JJ here. So can you talk us through that, Emily?
Sure. So this is a warranty deed that conveys 164 acres, 164-acre forest land in the town of Putney. And it includes special permit requirements that are associated with the wastewater permit that we received. And this was -- the wastewater permit was really a deferral permit. It's the process that allows a land to be subdivided, but it indicated we weren't installing septic systems or wastewater management systems. And so the special language, the notice of permit that was added after we got the wastewater permit, is part of that permit and it states that in order to comply, we will not construct or erect structures or buildings that require installation or connection up to a potable water supply. Did you all read it? Did you get a chance to read it? Does anyone have any questions about it or concerns?
Lyle, and Frank, you took a scan or anything?
I did, yeah.
Yeah, I forwarded.
Oh, thank you.
And I also sent it to Herb.
I thought he was originally --
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, let's --
Wait for him to come back.
I'd like to, but I assume he would have chimed in already. He has a problem with that. So we need a motion, correct?
I have one ready. I move that all PTSD board members sign the warranty deed to convey the 164-acre forest lot to the town of Putney.
Second. Any further discussion? Herb, we're approving signing the deed.
The deed, yeah, great.
I assume you took a look and you're good. Okay, any discussion?
I guess the one thing I didn't mention yet is that tomorrow I will drop this off at Bob Fisher's office and then his office files the original with the tax transfer, property tax transfer form. They'll file it at Town Hall and then our transfer will be complete.
Okay.
Cool.
Yes.
That's a lot of work.
And then it would asleep.
Thanks.
Sounds like one that I need, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome.
It is a massive amount of work, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. Any further discussion?
Now, this, the deed requires a witness and a notary, so can you witness?
Do you want to do that?
Okay.
Okay, let's go ahead. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Passes, let's go ahead and sign on and get JJ out of here.
Aye.
And then, guys, there's a lot of work ahead still on this.
Yeah.
This is a big one.
Just a little nail in it.
Keep it together. And then Frank, if you could fill out this blank day of blank for the witness. Just pass it this way. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so in witness right here, right? The 13th?
13th of September.
13th day of September.
And where does this go, Emily, when it's signed?
I take it to Bob Fisher. They file it at Town Hall. And then I'll copy it for our records, but they want the original.
Okay.
Jonathan's the notary, but then Andy Alhals is certificating.
And you've been pleased with Bob Fisher?
I have, yeah. And I'd like to continue to work with him with the bio's and nonprofit.
That's great. Great idea.
And I've been very pleased with my help at Town Hall.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So if you came in recently, there is a notebook pass being passed to sign in. If you haven't signed in yet, please do so so I can add you to a minute.
I'm going to send it to you.
Is it -- did everybody sign it?
Did you guys get something? Okay. Please. We should have brought a kit.
Should have made video.
I know, right? Watch it over.
There is a video.
And welcome, JJ. It's great to have.
Nice to be here.
Thanks so much.
I looked at that real good at this moment since I was stupid. Just changed the old desk since '78.
Yeah. Wow. Thank you.
Congratulations, Putney. You just bought a forest.
Yeah. For $10.
Price is right, so.
Yeah. Okay, so we're gonna leap to the petition with you, Mike, and then we're gonna go on to Wilson Engineering.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for the pencil. Thanks for the opportunity. I appreciate the time you gave me and hopefully we can move and keep this discussion going. Last time I was here, my sense of what was happening here is that alternative governance structure was not going to be presented by anyone from this board to the State Board of Education.
I'll interject. I think you've got a wrong interpretation of that.
Okay.
But you should know that.
Sure. And how is that?
Well, we're five members of a board and I know that at least two of us, as I said, there are five members and five members will speak and write, and two of them are on the AGS committee.
Sure.
So they would very much have the opportunity to speak.
Well, I appreciate that. I didn't get that sense at the last meeting that I was at, so continuing that, we just had an election. Primary election preceding the November election. The three top issues that I ran on included Act 46 and how we might push forward on the alternative governance structure. On behalf of those voters who gave me the most votes in all three towns, including Putney, I wanted to just share this petition, which asks that the alternative governance structure be given at least equal time at the State Board of Education from this board. So I have copies of this from each of you, for each of you. I also just want to briefly share that I appreciate all the work and time you've put on this. While I'm here on behalf of the voters, I'm here also in my perspective as somebody who's worked with children in this town around for the last three decades. And the work I do in child protection statutorily is to always look for the best interests of the children, and likewise, I'm here for the best interests of our children. We have a unique town here. Like a lot of Vermont towns, it's a tale of two cities. We have a unique town where not many small towns in Vermont where education is really the economic driver. We have a population that's filled with educators and people who are concerned and active in what's happening here. On the other hand, we have a lot of families with incredible needs, and it's one of the reasons I pushed in the last session to have a bill that we'll put forward so we can address better the prevalence and effects of type of trauma. And from that perspective, I'm here advocating for the voters and for the children and appreciate your consideration. Thanks.
Any thoughts or shall we move on?
I mean, I'm prepared to present on behalf of the AGS, but I have to warn you that my letter is currently the entirety of the space that we are allotted.
You're the one we talked about in terms of --
Yeah, I was typing a paragraph and -- I kept going.
That's all right. So we'll just -- how about we, when we get to talk about Act 46, we can space it out on a piece of paper and figure out how many words we each add. But you were gonna speak too, right? But we're not gonna talk -- yeah.
When I attach the petition to the minutes, do I attach the signed one?
Yes, and put all the names down.
Do you want me to scan it for you?
I can do that.
Okay. So if there are folks who have comments about the petition, how about you talk about it now and then we are going to move on to another topic and then come back to Act 46. So who wants -- it seems like Laura wants to speak. Anyone else? Okay, why don't we go to Laura and remind me of your name?
Either.
Okay, and we've been asked to, when we -- to stand and say our names.
I'm Laura Chapman. The petition asks that the people working on the Section 9 proposal are the ones to present, and my understanding is that this meeting is pretty much for that purpose of presenting Section 9 proposals. Three of the people in this board did not work on a Section 9 proposal, so what is the point of three of you presenting that didn't work on it?
We are representing the Putney Board and we've been asked to -- the board has been asked to present, so I'm a little confused. It's our -- go ahead, Emily.
Well, there were some board -- so the Section 9 was our report we sent to the state, and I think there were different people who abstained from signing that report than who attended the AGS committee meetings. I signed the Section 9, but I did not attend the AGS committee meetings.
You signed a report, not a proposal.
But that's what the Section 9 is, is that correct? So that's what this petition says, right? So it says you need to attend and participate in the AGS and alternative governance structure[937.25][937.25]/ Section 9 proposal. So those are two different things.
Mm-hmm.
Correct? And there's two different groups of people who either signed or participated in those two different things.
Did you -- hold on.
Lisa Adams, I'm confused with that.
Hold on, can you -- wait. Does it contain?
I just have a statement.
Yeah.
My statement is that the people have spoken. We voted against a merger and I'm hoping that our voices will be listened to and that we won't have to go any further than this next meeting. I hope that we never have to take it to court because I would think that if we voted against merger, it would be a legal binding voice for us. That's what I'm hoping.
Liz, did you want to speak?
Yeah. The State Board of Education already has a merger proposal. That's already been presented. And to split this short amount of time between two or three people with the State Board just seems like nonsensical. They already know what the merger proposal is. They already got your report from December. They need to hear about what the proposal is in order for them to make a judgment, and that will take more than three, four, five minutes.
They have the AGS proposal, too. They've read that, too. They have both.
They made it very clear on the memo that we did not need to restate the Section 9 proposal because they had read them.
Right. So they're not --
My point is that this -- the board already sent out this report and the merger thing, they've already seen that one.
And AGS. It seems like the intent --
Laura, Mike had it, so I'm sorry. The AGS, yes.
I just wanted to make a quick point. In the last meeting, the point was well taken that there was no vote on the alternative governance structure. And that's why, as I was canvassing voters, part of my discussions were both proposals and people for the most part had. And are you in support of the AGS? And that's what this petition reflects. So there hasn't been a vote, but there is a good sense of people that there is support for that AGS.
Is there anyone who wants to chime in about the petition right now? If not, we're gonna move on to Frank, and then we're gonna come back to Act 46 and what we're doing on the 19th. All right. So you're good, guys? Okay.
That's it.
Yeah, please take it away.
Here we go. So we have a couple of documents to share with you, so I'll just pass -- I think there are actually three. First one coming around is a funding commitment letter from Wyndham Wood Heat, which is part of the Clean Energy Development Fund that has been funding wood energy projects in Wyndham County. This is all part of the settlement for the closing of Vermont Yankee and a amount of money, it was about nearly $2 million, earmarked for Wyndham County to try to innovate around alternative fuel sources, sustainable alternative fuel sources. So there is the funding commitment letter, and then I want to share with you two more Wilson Engineering proposal. You may have already seen that one.
Yes.
Thank you. But this one is the one you probably haven't seen, another, a second document from Wilson Engineering, and that is a cost estimate of replacing the boiler that has not been functioning, the pellet boiler that has not been functioning really well since it was installed. And Herb, I think, what was that, five years ago?
That's five years ago, yes.
Yeah. So I've spoken with you about this as part of our kind of long-term capital plan before, and the Wyndham Wood Heat funding opportunity is winding down. They're -- initially, they had a hard deadline of December of this year. They've extended that, I believe, through June. So if we were to participate in that funding cycle, we would need this project completed by June, and if we act upon this now, there's plenty of time to have that happen. So if I could quickly summarize this document from Wyndham, from Wilson Engineering, it's the one with a table right on the first page. Title of the memory in there. What it does is it analyzes our use, our fuel use, and then provides a recommendation on the proper size and capability of the boiler. So that's the first three pages. Then we get into an analysis of operating under just a single boiler, which you have, an oil boiler that is, has been carrying the heating load, and this identifies an annual fuel cost of about $20,690. You see that on Table 5. Okay, so that's -- within this document, it's Section 3.2, few pages in. I see they didn't put page numbers on here, but they have nice tables. So if you get to Table 5, that's gonna show you, based on our square footage and our historical use of heating oil and considering the failed attempts to operate the pellet boiler that we have, we have an annual cost at a $2.40 assumption for fuel oil, which we know is quite variable, $20,690. So here's the part for, you know, I think for your consideration in essentially authorization to proceed or not. The next page, for Section 4, project capital costs. What it's showing is a figure, net estimated cost, $69,300. Net cost means that you see in the middle of that project.
I think you've gotta go another chain. There we go.
In the middle of that analysis that shows us purchasing a boiler, $34,000, doing some adjustments to the silo system, a little bit of electrical, then there's demolition and some engineering with controls, you see a figure of $69,300. That is net of the funding commitment that I handed out first. So really what we're talking about is, if we use round numbers, is this, you know, 69, rounded up to $70,000 plus the 20, the 19, 8. Okay, you're really talking about project cost of $90,000, 70 plus 20. And so if you were to make a motion to proceed, to authorize a project, I would be advising you to move to approve a bid process, to initiate a bid process for a pellet replacement system with approximate cost of $90,000. The reason why I mentioned those other numbers earlier is the engineers are pointing out that no public school attempts to run on a single boiler. They always want to see a backup system. And the Table 7 in that same page, in that same section, is saying, you know, if you didn't do the pellet boiler project that we just discussed, you're still gonna wanna do an investment in some sort of a backup system. And this Table 7 right on that same page is showing that you're really avoiding $21,000 at absolute minimum for a second backup oil boiler. This is just a way to help you appreciate that, you know, over time, we're getting down from $90,000, you know, in this analysis, down to $47,000 on a, you know, a theoretical analysis. And then in addition to that, the last thing I wanted to mention is, I walked you through the first few pages, and you'll see in that analysis that it says, well, we can operate on a fully functioning pellet system at about $3,000 less per year in fuel costs. So not only do we have a far better emissions, you know, in that we're not throwing the benzenes and the sulfors that come out of an oil stack, but so we're burning wood and it's mostly water vapor, but we're also spending $3,000 or less per year. So you could take that off, that 47, it's a sort of an appus to appus. Yeah. So my recommendation is that we do proceed with asking Wilson Engineering to take the next step on behalf of the Putney School District Board, which would be to develop a specification for bid and then bring bids back to this board. Typically, if you authorize that tonight, it's about a six-week process to create the bid, advertise, and give them time to respond. So that would put us into, you know, November, early November, and then you could again decide go or no go. If you were satisfied with the bids and we had three viable bids and you had a low acceptable bid, then at that time you could say, yes, let's move ahead or no, we, you know, there are other concerns.
Frank, before you say it, just to make sure I have this right, your recommendation is to proceed with Wilson Engineering, who will facilitate a specification for bid?
Yes, yeah.
Who will facilitate a bid process.
Yeah. A bid specification, as you said, yes, and the bid process, which is essentially engaging the vendors, asking them to participate in the bid and then assuring that we comply with the state bid law, which is advertising and considering the lowest qualified bid. A couple other things in that first document that I think we may have shared it already with you, so we don't need to look at it too much. The first document from Wilson Engineering simply outlines what I just said. It outlines that there's three phases to their services. Phase one is what you just got, which is a cost estimate, and we would not have gotten our funding commitment letter without a cost estimate, so they've done that for us. Phase two is what we just talked about, which is the drawing specifications, you know, and essentially taking us through. And then phase three is oversight on actually construction of the project. So I think, again, you can, as you consider the results of the process, you can do a no-go or a go at each one of those phases. Maybe one last thing on the project. A general timeline might be something like consider bids in November. This is only a two-week construction process because it's simply demolition of an existing boiler. There's no interruption in school. They're not gonna shut down the oil boiler. They can do this independent of that system. So, you know, theoretically, if there was a boiler available, you know, in terms of an order process, we could be done in December. I'm telling you, that won't happen because this particular boiler that they're recommending I'm telling you, that won't happen because this particular boiler that they're recommending has got a three-month lead time. So we're looking at probably more like a March, a March timeline for completion. And this also is a boiler that has now been installed and operating in Academy School, Guilford School, Green Street. And there's a lot of local experience with this one, that it's excellent, with terrific support from the vendor. That's it on that.
May I ask if a second oil boiler was removed to make way for the pellet stove that we currently have, the pellet boiler that we currently have?
There's only a need to remove the existing pellet.
Was there one, was there an oil burner removed?
We had three.
We had three, okay.
And there was one large one in that space. It was probably vintage '67, '68. It was old. It was going to have to be replaced no matter what, so. And then it was too small.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the, that was it.
And are these engineering costs included, broken up somewhere in here?
That's actually there.
I see 12, but not 11.5, so.
Yeah, so this, this document that you're referring to, the proposal, there is a front end to this process, which they've just completed. The front end is going in and developing the cost estimate. Coming to our school, taking our data, analyzing our data, and coming up with the cost estimate and recommendation. So that's, that's a commitment that is not in here, because this is the next, the next stage of that, yeah.
So the total cost would involve this 11.5, yes?
Yeah, I think it's a good point. I think what we're talking about is that 7 that you're looking at there is that 7.
Okay.
Yeah, and then there, maybe this other $1,000 fee is, it may be additional. This is a fixed fee, oh, that's a commissioning report. I know, I did see in the Wyndham Woodheat proposal that they cover the cost of commissioning. So, you know, that thousand is a cost, but it probably will be paid by Wyndham Woodheat. But Wyndham Woodheat, you know, is sticking to funding the pellet boiler and manufacturing.
Just looking for a bottom-line number. So you're saying that this 7 is that, but the other 4,500 may or may not be?
The other 4,500 is outside. It's to get us to where we are today.
So net cost would involve adding that in?
Yeah, if you wanted to look at the total.
Just, I want a bottom-line number, that's all.
Yeah, 69 plus the 45 would be a good, a good, and then, but then you might want to subtract the 3,000 that when I saved in the first year.
Sure, oh, yeah, I'm worried about that. I just wanted to know for real.
Yeah, and these are estimates, and, you know, we'll see what the bid, the bid could be more or less. But this, this group has worked with many of these vendors that supply and distribute and install that boiler. So this Wilson Engineering is very familiar with Putney School District and the manufacturer.
Yes, thank you.
Frank, is there anything Will's able to sell? Or is everything, it's all?
Scrap.
Yeah, unfortunately, no. Putney, Guilford School District had a small, a sec, extra boiler, and Wyndham Woodheat bought it, and we don't have those. We don't have any salvage value, unfortunately.
And our sense, our understanding is that we are at this point because of poor engineering and us being the rid of the board who processed this, originally purchased it.
Yeah.
A cheaper boiler, a cheaper pellet boiler.
Yes, that's right.
Because of funding.
This pellet boiler that Putney School District purchased, you know, unfortunately, you had recommendations from, I assume it was John Penny as the engineer and the designer, to utilize that manufacturer. That manufacturer, the ATC Boiler, has failed in every Vermont school environment. Maybe it's fine in a warehouse where it doesn't need to cycle on and off, on and off, and control 30 rooms, you know? But this boiler has failed in all Vermont schools, southern Vermont, this ACT boiler. Just the opposite is true of this recommended P4 boiler. There has been no failures of that, of that system.
Okay. All right, you need us to move something?
Yes.
About the language.
I move to approve a bid process for a wood pellet heating system for up to $90,000.
Facilitated by Wilson Engineering?
Yes. Okay. So I go to approve a bid process facilitated by Wilson Engineering Services for a wood pellet heating system for up to $90,000.
Second, any further discussion? Only that hopefully this is the end.
Yes.
And it sounds like it is.
I believe it will be.
Can we do something silly, disastrous to the old one, like take it outside and set it on fire? Have like a party and, you know, dance around it? I'd be favored with that.
Okay. More discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Standing? All right. Thank you, Frank.
You're welcome. And then I did want to mention that I didn't intend, I know it's not really an item on the agenda, but I do have a fiscal year and financial report I can either just hand out, or, or I see you have a finance and you have a couple of things.
Yeah, can you stick around a little bit? We're going to do Act 46.
Sure.
And then go in. Okay, great. All right, let's move on to Act 46. And what's ahead of us is the meeting on the 19th. I'm trying to find. Does everyone have the agenda for that day?
Uh, it's another minute.
So the 19th is Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay. So it's in Chester. It starts at 8:30. We don't need to be there until 10:15, but I would strongly recommend that those of us who can be there, get there at 8:30. Time for the public to speak, folks, is 10, 11:30. Are, we have 20 minutes, and then there will be a break. So as you guys, I mean, we talked about this last time, but it's, each district has 20 minutes, 10 minutes to speak or present, and then 10 minutes to answer questions. So we had all talked about intending to go. Is everyone able to go?
I believe so. I have a couple roadblocks, but I will do my best to make sure I'm there.
So what we touched on earlier is splitting that up into five two-minute periods for each of us. I don't know if we want to do that. That might be the easiest thing to do, or we could do it another way. I'm assuming, I would encourage everyone to speak.
My suggestion would be to divide the presentation in half.
We certainly could do that.
You know, it seems reasonable. At the time that we made our recommendation, our board was split, possibly differently. It doesn't seem unreasonable to split it in half, rather than to try to break it down into five kind of disjoint ideas.
What do you guys think?
Sounds reasonable to me.
Lots of other boards are doing it that way.
I didn't understand Rattleboro was doing it.
Yeah, that's what Joe was doing. Joe and Dave were doing that.
I would also plug in, we talked about this briefly last time, but somewhere in there, there'd be a communication of the value of the pre-K through 8 program.
Yes.
I think, you know, I think that's a strong model. I think there's a lot that our town gains by that. So somewhere in there, wherever it happens to be, I would like that to be.
Okay. So you can speak to that?
Okay.
Yeah.
Could you tell us where it's going to occur?
It's Green Mountain Union High School. Have you been there? Yeah. Jump in with someone else's car. You could jump in with one of us or someone else.
Chester.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be leaving at 7:45. You and I could have quite a talk, Anne, but feel free. So do we want to talk about how we break up those two sections? Or do we want to just arrive that day and?
Let's talk about it.
Yeah.
Well, yes. Also, we have to submit a piece of paper to?
Yeah, but let's talk about.
And as you can see, that's question one in C. So question, I don't know if question two is in there. Just question three.
Yeah, you'll have to.
Yeah, and that's, I've shoved the Marlins out. I can make the time.
You'll just have to, I'd speak to it.
They'll take your, they'll take your, if you're longer than what they allow, they were taking your full comments via email.
They do say you can submit additional information.
Okay. Yeah. Well, then possibly we could literally take two, eight and a half by 11 pages.
Well, so can we talk about the meeting first and then talk about the letter?
Sure, but this has to be out 48 hours ahead of time of the meeting, so.
Yes, so that's why, yeah, that's why.
Too far before the.
So what is your suggestion for splitting it up?
Just doing it in half, the obvious thing.
Yeah, but does anyone want to talk about who's talking about what?
Oh, I'm happy to talk about the AGS and my notes about what the secretary's report might have omitted or, yeah, not acknowledged. Those aren't the exact words they used.
So it seems like you, Tim and Annie are pro AGS.
Yes.
That's simplistic. But you speak for five minutes, and then the other, the three of us can speak for three minutes.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to the most of it. I'll pass it on if I want to.
Okay. So my suggestion is that I could start and speak for about a minute, introduce, I'm going to take, I'm going to suggest that the five minutes of the, sort of the non-pro AGS group, the three of us, that I take the first minute. I'd recommend that I speak first, but I don't need to, but that I could introduce the board, talk about a little bit of the history, you know, 30, 30 seconds to a minute, and then pass it on to you guys.
Okay. It still seems split in such a way that should satisfy the people who did vote for the AGS and against the merger. I feel it is really important for their voices to be heard because it's important for all of our voices to be heard in all of this and pretty much anything involving government, so.
Absolutely agree. I think it was in the spirit of the report section, the report which was submitted, which was a collective of all sentiments that could be collected. I think those voices need to be heard.
And the AGS proposal was submitted with that.
Yeah.
All right.
But we'll, yeah.
Sound good?
So it's a kind of a silly question, I think, but is, will there be a timekeeper?
Yes. Yeah.
My computer has a timer.
Yeah, and we can ask, we can ask.
Because I experimented with it today.
For the two five-minute sections, right?
Yeah.
So then, so we're good?
The other thing we had mentioned in the last meeting about something to communicate was including towns like Westminster.
Yeah.
Do we want to still include that in this first five minutes?
Yeah. Do you want to talk quickly about what we want to include in those first five minutes? Westminster, pre-K to 8. Landlocked Westminster kids in Putney. Okay, and then I'll turn it over to you guys. Okay?
I have a common question. When I read the minutes, there was this suggestion that Westminster merged. I believe I read the minutes correctly. They're, they're kind of skimpy, that Westminster be merged with the towns down here.
Which minutes?
The minutes from last meeting.
Oh, from the Putney?
Yeah.
So we have talked several times over the years about Westminster merging with Putney. We were interested in exploring that, and that wasn't something Westminster was interested in.
So what are you referring to here?
So I think there's interest in expressing to the state board that, and interrupt me if I'm miss, you know, speaking, that we and Westminster have a very similar culture, and that many Westminster students live closer to Putney than they do to Westminster Elementary School. So we want to acknowledge that. We did that in the report, but that wasn't in the acting secretary's synopsis, and I think we, we discussed shining a light on that.
It was also suggested that the addition of Westminster to a merger, if it's forced on us, would dilute the voting power of Rattleboro in favor of smaller towns. So that is a matter under consideration.
Thanks for clarifying that because, because Westminster has seventh and eighth grade choice, they cannot be forced to merge.
Right.
And that needs to be right up front, and they don't want to merge, and they're not giving up their choice.
I'm not suggesting forcing them to.
I'm just saying.
I'm suggesting in such a scenario, it might be better for them and for us, and for all of the smaller towns in a theoretical school district. You have more small-town votes, less large-town votes.
I get that, but I'm, the Westminster board stands.
It's, we're just telling them what we think. Westminster will tell them what they think. I'm sure.
Absolutely.
So can we talk about the letter?
Can I bring in for a second?
Yeah.
I just wondered if somebody could clarify with the sort of, not so much with the proposal to actually unify Westminster in with the rest of Wyndham Southeast, but in terms of the landlocked kids. Would that proposal essentially be to like, be sort of a second bite of the apple after everyone in Wyndham Southeast gets a bite?
So I think we just want to alert, it would be my position that we want to, this has been a long, struggling issue for families. They want to come to Putney Central because it's easier. Many of them, those who can, end up paying for Putney Central, which it's, it puts them in a very, it's very awkward. And so this is an issue the school has had to deal with for many years, and since so much change is afoot, it seems, it would be prudent to shine a light on that. So if anything could be done, and granted, I don't think anyone really thinks anything will be done, but it would be silly not to point it out.
But there's something specific about like, what order it would be in? I'm just imagining that other people in Wyndham, Wyndham Southeast, in a unified school district, might want to send their kids to PCS to take open slots, which may ultimately leave out those Westminster people.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I don't think we need to address that. We just need to articulate a concern that we see.
Bring it to their attention.
Yeah, okay.
Have you talked with the Westminster board about that?
Parents have done it.
But not board.
I think this board did it three or four years. I feel like I can't remember all the details, but it's, it's been discussed over the years. So can I ask a question? It's just to clarify, because, you know, there's, on, my understanding from my time here is that we did not in fact make a proposal, we sent up a report. In this five minutes, are you choosing to make a new proposal? I don't think anyone, no?
No, that's not what they're asking for.
No, I know they're not asking for that, but it seems like you're making suggestions, which is.
We're pointing out points of the report that were, that didn't come through in the secretary's proposal. There wasn't much mention of maintaining the pre-K through 8 model or the middle school. So this is our opportunity to point out other value here that wasn't mentioned in her report.
Okay.
And I'm ready to point out that under Act 49, I'm not sure that merging K through 6 and K, pre-K through 8 is possible.
Yeah.
Or practically. So they will hear both sides of that argument.
Can I ask a lot of the questions? I'm at it. Are you going to split the question time? I can't imagine they would want us to. I think they'll have the questions.
Yeah, I think that their questions will come as a whole.
Okay.
And they might take a point from what Alice has to. And they might take a point from what Alice has to say and say, ask me, so what do you think of that? Or vice versa. And I think we're just.
Yeah, I think they'll ask.
They'll ask us as a group, any questions that they have.
And we, we can specify, we can ask them to use our names when asking a question.
Yeah.
That might simplify things, so.
So it's not, nobody's going to get up there and go rah rah merger?
I don't think so.
Well, I made like a commitment on that one.
Oh, you did make a commitment?
I would like a commitment that nobody's going to get up there and say, we think we should, the best course is to merge because the voters have clearly rejected it. There was too much in that merger proposal that was not addressed.
I think what they will hear is that some of us think rah rah merger and some of us think, oh heck no. That's what I think they'll hear.
And that's what they know.
And that's what they know anyway. They know we're divided, um, but they'll hear it from us. And I don't.
We're divided as a town.
Not according to the vote. People care enough to vote, clearly said.
And that's an important distinction.
I think it's obvious that the voters of Putney voted down, um, the merger that was proposed. I think the state board knows that.
But there were folks that voted to approve it too, that's what I was saying.
Sorry, I missed that.
There, there was a group that voted to approve the merger as well. So there are community members who supported it.
Right, a few of the minorities.
Sure.
Quite a bit of it.
Yeah.
And I don't think Alice would literally be rah rah. Just that's not who she is.
I was joking.
I know, but I mean, I wanted to make it sound that way, that it really was not going to be on a level of vociferousness like that, that rah rah sounds, which I went along with and I was just being flip.
And people must recognize that the Articles of Agreement created by the study committee was one based on us all working together in these five and then four towns. We were compromising and working to comply with the law. We're now in a different spot. The state board has been offered a draft Articles of Agreement by the AOE that is significantly different from the options given to the study committee because we had to comply. It'd be my position that if the study committee had been offered those articles to play around with, the reception of the merger proposal that ultimately was presented before the voters would have been dramatically different. The option for the board, the closing of schools, it's dramatically different what the state board has to offer.
I'm prepared, I'm prepared.
Good.
Uh, you can change the chip.
Yep. All right, so we're going to move on unless anyone has something to say. Cause we're now going to talk about the letter. So we have a letter which we do not need to submit. I suspect we want to, but we do not need to. It asks us, we answered last time, the first answer, it has question number one and question number two. We had very simple answers when we, um, looked at them last time. I don't know if we want to stick with the answers. It looks like Annie has written like a paragraph for each answer now.
Oh, no, no, it's, it's only half a page. But that's question one, sections A and B.
Okay.
And this is section C. I don't think I have number two on here yet.
Okay. So, um, what we all, did you put those in the minutes?
The questions are in the minutes, but I, we didn't, I didn't, um, start reading, I don't have the letter in minutes, but I was starting.
Shall we just keep with the answers that we came up with last time, which were just simplistic? I think it was yes, no, and.
Right. Well, how is that going to, how is number one going to work?
Right, and we don't even have to answer number one, right? Do you have it? No. Yeah. Okay. So, do we want to just not answer number one because it takes up space? And then each write a paragraph for number two?
Do you mean question one as in why it's not possible or practicable under?
Yes.
Act forty-six, section ten? Well, I didn't have an answer for you last time, but I do have an answer as to why it is not possible. I, um, as I understand Act forty-six and its revision through Act forty-nine, which is not brought up at all in the list of questions. I mean, the very first thing there is that the secretary's, the acting secretary's plan creates a geographically isolated district because Vernon cannot merge with us. And I feel very strongly that Vernon and his half a million dollars would be better served staying in VSU with the rest of us rather than trying to take away our half a million dollars and go with them. And I understand that there would be tuitioning involved, but we don't know how that looks yet. They haven't made a decision yet.
Vernon wants to stay.
Yes, Vernon does want to stay.
So my suggestion would be that we put, you send that in your comments.
Okay.
Just because we're not all going to vet the language of all of that.
Yeah, and as you can see, the, like, it starts with Vernon and that's not a sentence, so.
It speaks to why it's not practicable, too.
Right, but what she's talking about is us sitting here and hammering out the words between us. If it's attached to my half of the proposal, then perhaps Tim and I, you have a certain skill set that I do not actually possess. Yeah, call it a J E. That would help me with words and how it conflicts with the law. That would be very helpful, but I do have the ideas as to why it is not possible or practicable. And what I think the best way forward for Putney is, which is section C. Question three is, uh, would the acting secretary's report misunderstood or omitted or whatever?
That's number two.
Is that number two or number three?
There's only two questions.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, then I wrote it down as three.
So I would, I would recommend that for the letter that we collectively submit forty-eight hours in advance, we, we do not do one, that you do that. Any of us who want to do that separately, go ahead and do that. And that we just each come up with a paragraph that I submit Friday afternoon.
Any questions?
That's number two.
Okay.
And, um, you just, I would recommend just getting that to me Friday afternoon, or we could just have you do it, since you're clerk.
I was going to ask, cause I'm going to be writing it minutes, if I could have a pass on the paragraph.
Okay.
Cause I have to write all day tomorrow.
Yeah, that makes sense. So just by, can you guys get me a paragraph by five o'clock on Friday? Or actually?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow's Friday? Yeah. That's why I send you guys an email warning you individually that this might be coming.
I can, assuming that my high school situation doesn't blow up in a particular way tomorrow.
Okay.
Well, but I should be.
By, yeah. And I'm going to recommend, so this, so the page will, some of the space will be taken up with who we are and, uh, you know, putting a question in there, but I would imagine a little less than a fifth of a page for each of you, like eleven font. And if it's, if it doesn't fit, I will make the font smaller.
Everyone believing what they've already seen.
Yeah, cause I don't, I don't come close to, to meeting that with my staff at eleven points and eight doesn't help much. And I don't think Google Docs goes any smaller than eight point one.
Okay. So by five o'clock tomorrow, guys, and then I'm, it's going and I'm done. Okay?
Hold on.
All right, anything else with this, or shall we move on?
Are you, Annie, I'm asking you, are you satisfied with this?
I am satisfied that it is a reasonable compromise. If I'm only going to be satisfied with getting my own way, of course not. But this is a reasonable compromise between reasonable people who agree that the education of our children is what we're here for. And regardless of who is right or who is wrong, we're still going to be responsible for that after a merger or not merger occurs. And I'm not interested in starting any further wars in a way that will hurt the kids.
I want to check with you. I want you to check with you.
Yeah, no, I am, I am satisfied. Because I, I think it is fair and balanced.
Oh God, that's.
I know. They, they don't use it anymore. But I'm not lying.
Okay, guys, let's move on.
Thank you for your time.
Let's do finance. Does any, anyone need?
Emily's got all the numbers for you. Yeah, I haven't signed food service for me.
Is it just the ones from nine-ten? We just.
We, there were two special warrants plus food service, right?
I just have the ones from nine-ten.
Oh, maybe there were two copies, okay.
There's three copies of the ones from nine-ten.
Was it nine hundred percent or did I sign two of them?
What does your signature look like? It looks like you did, is it the black pen?
Yeah.
Second, mine.
And you did big strongly when you declared that.
This one means Sergio's, I believe. I just think it didn't get to you. I think that's Sergio's.
Probably, cause I sent.
No, that's Dr. Sergio, that's not my signature.
So can you guys move on?
I moved to approve the warrants from nine-ten, two thousand eighteen in the amount of fifty-one thousand, nine hundred, forty dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, it passes. Let's go ahead and do the administrative rep, actually, yeah, we'll talk to you in a sec, Frank. Let's do the administrative reports.
Okay, I just have two quick dates. September twenty-fifth is a V S B A regional workshop. It's at the Kusak Room at the high school. You should have gotten the information from the V S B A. You'll need to go online and register for it. Um, and if more than three or more of you are going, then we need to let Barb know so that she can warn that. And Annie, you're saying that, right?
I'm sorry.
Would it come minus you, please?
And then you should have gotten the.
Probably, yeah.
Double check.
Okay.
V S B A?
V S B A. And the other date is September twenty-sixth. Uh, will be a W S E S U board meeting. We'll meet at five-thirty at Kusak Room for a finance committee and then six o'clock for the regular W S E S U board meeting.
You said it was the twenty-sixth?
Yes.
That's it?
That's it. Her?
Yes. I will be brief. Um, just a quick recap. I did put this information in the newsletter, but our summer camp program was awesome. I have some figures. We ran it for seven weeks. Most of you know that. Uh, we had two hundred and eighty-eight kids participate, not individuals, but some, you know, multiple enrollments. We averaged about forty-two kids a week in camp. And we offered this summer thirty-three different, um, options. Now, some of those are repeated a couple of weeks, but that was, that was really pretty, pretty awesome, I think. Um, the P T O is interested in helping support, um, summer camps on a couple of different levels. One is, um, helping us to pull the, the information, uh, well, to advance the information cycle, I guess, a little bit. Put together some documentation that we can get out to families a little bit earlier. Uh, that's fine. But, uh, our, our persistent challenge has been having adults commit to, um, actually helping us by teaching something or being part of a workshop. But, you know, now that it's out there, maybe we'll get a little bit more buy-in for that. That's, that's nice. Okay, Pellicle, we've talked about. So we've got this, Josh Fields and I have cooked up this idea that Frank only knows about tangentially and, and about not having the, uh, not having our standard vendor do the school pictures this year and having us do it as a fundraiser.
Love that.
Yeah, the, the feedback from parents has been, you know, twenty-one in favor, so we can, and we can, we can also accommodate that one. Um, if need be. So the only snag that we have, and this is, I, I haven't spoken to Frank about this, so I hope there's not much of a blind side, but the only snag we have is about how to reconcile the direct deposit piece. So the vendors that we work with for this, it's, it's a place called Smugmo. We are really big now. It's a procurement, you know, we post pictures, parents can collect, buy whatever you want. We, we never touch the money. Goes through direct deposit to an account. Now, there were some reservations, I talked to Ike about this, about geez, you know, we don't want to like necessarily put out our, our routing, uh, for direct deposits for the whole district. So the question is, um, whether or not we couldn't just set up, uh, well, I talked to Ike about this a little bit today. He said, does the P T O have a standalone account we could run through there? I don't think they do. I don't think they do, but I could check my. But absent that, if they don't have that, would it be possible for us to set up just a separate account, account of peoples and have that be the direct routing? Josh and I and some, whoever else could be on the account so there's clear, uh, routing information and. Now, we don't, we don't write checks against it. We don't do anything until we decide we're going to put that money into the summer camp fund. So it's all sort of tied up. So I don't know.
Yeah, it is, it is possible. I, I think I would prefer to just keep one, one account. We already have several Putney School District accounts.
Okay. Pick one of those, you think?
And the key is that we, that we have the one-way authorization. We're happy to receive money, but, but we make it clear there's a block on any A C Hs out.
Right.
We don't initiate. And as long as, uh, we can set that up, then I see no problem. If there's a problem with blocking, uh, you know, outgoing transactions, then, um, yeah, the, the additional account is going to be the way to go. So we'll, we'll do one of the two things.
All right. So I wouldn't anticipate anything like that, but that's great, cause, uh, we'd really like to take this on and be nice to change pace. Yeah. I'll talk to more of you about it.
Yep. Better pictures too, frankly.
Say it?
Better pictures too, frankly. Yeah, no, I'm sure, I've looked.
I don't have any of those Star Wars backgrounds.
I can show you how to do that.
Yeah, so the last, yeah. Uh, the last thing, uh, is just a cool thing about the enrollment. And they've already mentioned, I think we're at one seventy-six right now. But, uh, a little, uh, P S on that is that next year's pre-K class is already fully enrolled. Sixteen kids.
Wow.
Yeah. So that's good.
So how are you, how are you juggling the small middle school?
All right, good question. So what, we're, that is not, go ahead.
I speak not only because I'm interested, but I, but I also think in a merger-like situation.
Yeah.
How would that benefit you and how would that? What would you do?
Okay, so in the short term, recall that we have twenty-five kids in the fifth grade.
Right.
So this is a one-year experience. So for the next three years after this year, we have reasonably healthy enrollment. Uh, we also have twenty-five kids in the first grade, so. So what have we done sort of proactively around that? One of the things that we're doing, and it's kind of on a beta sort of trial basis, is we're having Don Linden as the science teacher, um, do some partnering with the fifth grade for science. So he'll be working with Audrey to, uh, plan some sort of project-type event or two that they'll actually, um, work on together. We're also looking at how we can do the same thing. It's a little tricky because of the schedule, but, but with the other teachers as well. So they, and, and because of licensing restrictions, so it's, it's kind of a weird thing. So you get your, you get your K-six license and then the middle school is really seven, eight, even though we're six, seven, eight. And that has caused some headaches in the past, which have been resolved over time. But we, we would look towards integrating some of the older, particularly in the science and, and social studies, I think, areas, you know? Because those are the things that the younger grades tend to get, I don't want to say short shrift on, but they, they tend to spend, uh, less time, uh, proportionally with, with their work, um, on those things because they're always doing other stuff. So that, those are some of the things that we're looking at. Having a schedule where you, you want kids to get X number of specials each week. You know, you want your two gym classes, you want your music, you want your art, et cetera. While at the same time accommodating a, a pre-K degree environment is, is really a pretty daunting, uh, task overall. Because those kids that Don might have had in that block or in that class for science, they need to be somewhere. And so how do we, how do we juggle that? Lynn has helped me tremendously with the, with the master schedule over the past couple of years. Did so again this year. And so far, we didn't have any classes standing up, no hall with nothing to do, which is always a good sign.
Yeah.
Because of, because of the scheduling thing. The other thing with scheduling that we're looking at is Power School does have a scheduling module. It's more commonly used at the high school level. But I spoke with Paul Smith about this and he's looking into it to see if it might not help us envision some potential opportunities for, for our, our age group. It's kind of where we're going.
Yeah.
Josh has, I should just mention quickly about the courses. You know, he, he was shifting. We talked last year about him doing a music technology class around recording, sound recording and stuff, and it was like off the charts. So we had to schedule two sections of that for the, to accommodate the kids that wanted to do it. So that's a really positive sign. We're making a little sound booth and stuff. It's kind of fun for Audrey. So that's that, yeah. Is there any questions about any of that? Oh, can I just mention, I'm looking at the Middlebury English for Middlebury Languages. So we had, we had a communication issue that, you know, came upon us sort of late in the game, but we've managed to scramble and accommodate. So we, Gao Ping is not with us any longer. She's down at BAMs.
Full time?
She's BAMs, Vernon, and. BAMs, BAMs and Vernon for sure.
Yeah. So that's okay. I, I, we've hired this, this new guy, Aiden Hill.
Holding?
Holding. Aiden Holding, yeah. Who actually has, he did an internship a couple of years ago at St. Paul's School. He taught German at another high school for a year and he's come on board as a, as a parent. And so since that structure is more of a sort of lab environment, not direct instruction, he's, he's going to be facilitating that. So we'll, we'll have Middlebury for the, for forty-five kids in the middle school, six, seven, eight, and they'll be able to choose and be monitored. Really, it's cool, I think it'll be just fine.
Good.
He has a education and experience in linguistics and language and speaks fluent German.
Yeah, I think he taught.
He's a keeper.
I think he taught at Pontell, I think, for a year in, in German over the amount of work.
So he, when we were at the first day array, he sort of spoke about how he could generalize that knowledge and that experience to help the kids learn all different kinds of languages, dialects, and sort of things. He seemed like a cool guy.
Yeah, I think he gives you a lot.
I think if he speaks German fluently, he will not have any trouble picking up beginning Spanish and French. Having done that.
Thanks, Herb.
Thank you.
Committee reports. Let's do finance to let Frank go home.
Okay. Here is the fiscal year-end report. These are still preliminary, because our auditors have been with us for a couple of weeks at the central office and making good progress on, on their review. But if they do have adjusting entries, we'll hear from them in, within, within a month. So we had a very good fiscal year-end. Won't take too long on this review, but if you have questions after a chance to look at the information, you know, glad to answer those. So the first page you're looking at provides the revenue overview of the general fund. First column of data is our budget. You see that, three million, two thirty-eight. This is, you know, the total down at the bottom of that line of data. And you see the second column of numbers says Y T D. That's year-to-date. And that's through June thirtieth, so the twelve-month ending, June thirtieth. Three million, two fifty-six. So when you say we have a budget of three million, two thirty-eight and we actually received three million, two fifty-six, that's, you know, more money than we budgeted. That's a good thing. Seventeen thousand dollars favorable. And I didn't intend to get into the details of it, but if you just glance at the, at the, the numbers, you see that there was more favorable variances than unfavorable. In total, we received a little bit more. You know, it's only half a percent of our total, so it's a very little variance. When we go to the, to the end of the, of the general fund, that's on page nine, so it's sort of like two-thirds of the way through this document. If you look at page nine, remarkable result. Three million, three oh three, seven sixty. And then is the plan. And Herb is administrative.
Wow, hurrah!
Came in with one of the smallest variances I've ever seen.
Harry Potter's got nothing on me.
Of three million, three oh three, three thirty-five. So a four-hundred-dollar variance on a three-million-dollar budget.
That's a hard.
Pretty impressive, you know, adhering to the, the plan. And as always, there are pluses and minuses. We, we can talk about them. But the, the good news is we had planned on a sixty-five-thousand-dollar deficit, right?
Right, right, right.
And you look at three million, two thirty-eight in revenues and approving, if that's budget, you know, and then we approved three million, three oh three in spending. You know, three oh three is sixty-five thousand dollars more than two thirty-eight. So what did we actually do? Are, are the actual difference between spending and how much we received is more like forty-two thousand. So, you know, that means we're favorable. We still reduced fund balance, but we reduced fund balance by about forty-seven thousand instead of sixty-five thousand. So that's, that's, that's a good thing. Couple other quick points. After page nine, I've given you another fund summary. Fund, yeah, summary. The capital fund. So you see, we had a little bit of interest income in the capital fund. And we completed that, another section of the roof project. That's the sixty-seven thousand, eight-ten under that document that follows page nine. And so, and you see, we're doing fine with. Well, I didn't actually give you the balance sheet, so let me tell you what the balance sheet is. We still have approximately ninety thousand in the capital fund after, after spending that. We started with a hundred and sixty thousand. You see, we spent the sixty-seven thousand. The difference between one sixty and sixty-seven, you know, so only ninety thousand. And, you know, we just, we just talked about a project for less than ninety thousand. So, you know, we're hoping to see, you know, we'll pursue as many funding sources as we can, but, but I've had this in mind when we talked about this project. The last fund I wanted to discuss with you is the food fund. Another favorable fiscal year-end. I know it was very.
That's so exciting.
Programmically, yes, as well. More importantly, programm, programmically, it was very, very good.
What page is that, Frank?
So it's the last page in the document.
It's an art page.
Yeah. This is coming out a different system, so the page numbers after page nine are a little different. So we had a, this is, as I said, a different format. So sorry about the fact that budget is the third column. Okay, so it's the reverse of the other format. But budget, one million, a hundred and fifty-six thousand, you see, in revenues. And we received a hundred and forty-six, so there's a little variance there, but we made that up when you look at expenditures on the bottom. Budget, one fifty-six, but we only spent one thirty-four. So we, we actually, you know, had a, had a little bit of a surplus, right? We brought in a hundred and forty-six thousand, but we spent a hundred and thirty-four, so that's about a twelve-thousand-dollar surplus in the food fund. And in the food fund, we had started the year with about an eight-thousand-dollar fund balance and we're going to add to that another twelve. So we'll have about twenty thousand fund balance in the food fund. And then kind of related to that, as you may recall, we reported earlier that we did receive the grant for the freezer, a substantial contribution toward the freezer, so.
Do people realize how phenomenal this is?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is, this is.
This is huge.
Terrific, yeah, terrific progress, given, you know, given the challenge of relatively small-scale food service program being able to, to cover costs. And then also I'll mention, because it's another favorable statistic related to that, the question is how much did the general fund contribute to the food fund?
Yeah.
Because that is a way to essentially cover a deficit.
Offside, yeah.
And that's back on that page nine I was sharing with you. From the general fund's point of view, that's an expense, you know, it's coming out of, out of the budget, the operating budget. So page nine, when you look at the last couple of lines there, you see food, service, subsidies, second line down. The plan was forty-five thousand and we, we dispersed thirty-five, because you did, the food fund didn't need it. You know, so if we had to disperse the whole forty-five instead of having an eleven-thousand-dollar surplus, you would have a twenty, you know, twenty-one thousand. You, you see that the general fund could, could kind of use it to keep us within our three million, three oh three authorized spending.
So not all payroll expenses, though, are in these lines, right?
Payroll should all be in the food fund.
Even the manager.
Well, don't forget, we're splitting that stuff, right?
Right.
So we've got that sustainability portion.
Yes.
So maybe we want to.
Which I think was like fifteen.
Yeah, that's in the page eight there, that sustainability. It's the prior, prior group right at the bottom of page.
Just like you knew we wanted to sheet that back into food service this year.
Well.
I'm just throwing it out there so that we really have an honest.
Yeah, I have a thought about that, too, when you read it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So we, you know, one of the overarching hopes for that sustainability position was to get out and do some outreach around nutrition, education, the garden, et cetera. We haven't really been able to do that primarily because he's, he's doing the ordering and the bookkeeping and the issuance of checks. So my suggestion would be that we aggressively, to the extent that that's possible, aggressively pursue a one-day-a-week bookkeeper. And just make that happen. I don't know if you had any thoughts on that, Frank?
Yeah, we, we did want to address this at the S U level because now, now we have the experience and we, we are fully staffed. When we started this conversation, you know, we weren't fully staffed.
It was ugly.
And, and, yeah. So, so I, I think because the S U still is required and does a good job with coordinating food services with the Child Nutrition Program, the agency of it, it's hard to get away from all of the requirements that the USDA and the agency puts on bookkeeping. So it would be, I think, a lot more challenging to manage if we had a, a third party outside of what we already have now, but I, I think.
So you're suggesting someone in central, you're sacked of it?
Yeah.
You know.
That'd be great. Yeah, I'm all for it.
So, you know, yeah, and, yeah, we, we can map out a timeline on that. We unfortunately do have a tremendous amount coming at us at the S U. They're changing the charter council, changing the, the finance system. And we're in the middle of a governance restructuring debate. So we, we'd want to put this in a context of realism.
Yeah.
I don't think it would be that difficult to make the transition.
So now we've been tying this up.
All ears, whatever. You read it.
I have another question. How many, what, so our subsidy was thirty-five this year, or last year. What are subsidies at other, Dummerston?
Yeah, Dummerston's about thirteen, fourteen thousand. Guilford's about twenty thousand.
Okay.
Vernon has been forty thousand.
Right.
And Bradshaw Town has been about fifty thousand. The high school has been between zero and, and ten, because it's typical, the larger the program, the more opportunity is for a higher volume, particularly à la carte sales that are outside of the child nutrition program, create more profit, and they subsidize.
So my, it's, it sounds to me like we are paying perhaps ten to fifteen thousand dollars more than other schools of our size, but we're getting significantly more for our money. And we're paying people, we're giving people benefits and good wages.
Absolutely.
And the quality is significantly better.
Yeah, yeah.
So let's put that in the minutes. And I, I, this is the sort of conversation I'd really love to have if we actually end up merging sooner rather than later, because we had hoped that this day would come. And it's actually come sooner than I imagined it would, based on our incredibly rocky start.
How many years in is it?
We're in year four right now.
But the first year was sort of a wash.
Yes, yeah, if it wasn't even really a practice year.
The food was good, though. The food was good.
At the beginning.
I will give you that much. That's true.
But I, I, I think this is the sort of thing that I'd like us to start talking about, because it's really positive.
Yeah.
And if, if there is a bottom line that would be, that everyone could access, that was good on the budget.
Yeah, it is absolutely what we had talked about a little four years ago, that we, we hoped that it would become a law that the region could learn from and, and scale, scale up. And then when we, when we look at the other very innovative model that's gotten lots of accolades, the Academy School that's been expanded to Green Street and Oak Grove, where they've, they've got a page of, I think it's actually two pages of specific food quality requirements that it's not only what will be included, but what shall not be included in the, the child nutrition program. And, and that's just a, it's, that was a very challenging thing for the food service folks to accommodate, because that's not the industry standard and that within us, you know. So they went out and created a lot of new relationships and a lot of them are Vermont-based, you know, Black River to some extent.
But what they are doing, I mean, it sounds to me like they're getting better quality, but they're still not offering people the wages that we are offering them.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't give you an analysis of that, but I would, I would, I wouldn't dispute it.
That's something I go back to, because.
Yeah, that's very significant.
Benefits and.
It makes a big difference. I mean, it's all, you know, we know that it's all about the people who are doing it, right? And we've put together a heck of a team. Now our challenge is to sustain them in a way that makes it worth their while.
Yeah, and then grow the program, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any more questions for Frank?
Not related to this, but I don't know actually if it falls under the Bailey Week, but I had you here. I'm going to have to make a request under the Americans with Disabilities Act. Apparently, my corneal transplant is failing. I need these numbers on ledger-sized paper preferably, but I would settle for legal if it's expanded to fill the spaces, because as far as I know, this will only get worse.
Well, that's too bad, but yes, we'll, we'll work with you.
And, you know, I've got more than one board, so. But I didn't know if I should tell you, tell Barb, what I have to do here.
Yeah, I don't, I can, I can convey that, yeah.
Yeah, it's just bigger paper, that's all.
I have to speak up.
Yep, they only started happening about a month ago. I have this doing great and was going to go buy regular glasses, like a regular person.
Uh, the financial statement.
Okay. Diversity? Are we good with Frank? Frank can go home?
Yes, Frank.
Frank's got his financial statement.
So we have a diversity mandate next week, yeah? We spoke about. Where's the diversity?
Oh, you did the training?
Oh, the training. September, September.
Yes, that is what it is.
Five o'clock, how is school? September, September, June, May, five o'clock, how is school?
I already told Ricky that I would be there because I don't know that anyone else from the high school board is going, and I feel it would be a significant contribution to our board.
Is anyone, I'm going, is anyone else going? Going there?
To the diversity training on the 17th?
No.
Oh, should I have my calendar?
Monday.
Oh, five to eight?
Five to nine.
Five to nine. It is in my calendar. Do we have to register separately? Or you wanted RSVPs for late dinners, right?
Yes.
Okay. So it is in my calendar. I'm not sure that I can confirm it yet, but I had it marked down there.
Okay.
I'll go in an RS, can I RSVP? Yes, and then if I can't make it, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Anything about the forest that we need to discuss now?
Do you want your P E?
Other than that, we don't own it anymore? Other than that, yeah. They know they have to give it to a nonprofit, right?
The town?
Yeah. We talked about that.
They did.
There was that vote.
I don't think the town really wants to meet.
Yeah.
The community equity committee report?
Oh, yes, sorry.
It's very short. No, it's very short. We met yesterday. The fall or winter, we haven't been up our minds showcase, is on November 14th at 6:00. It will feature works in progress from the students based on the theme of Voices of a People's History of the United States, which is a book by Howard Zinn, and it specifically is talking about the voices that had been ignored in our history. And we are currently reporting to each other by chapter on that book and discussing it in terms of how we can draw a connection and make it real for the students. Also, a new position has been discussed, removing the diversity coordinator to the SU level or an assistant one, we haven't made up our minds yet, but to. Currently, BUHS number six is paying for the entirety of the diversity coordinator, even though we share her with the member schools, and I think it's a little much, and I think Michaela thinks it's a little much, and we're looking at a part-time other person, and I'm not clear yet whether we're moving the diversity position to the SU or the part-time person.
That's what I was thinking, that the, we approach the SU board for a part-time diversity person that would work in the schools outside.
And the diversity coordinator will become director of the Department of Diversity and Equity, or something that I've left the paper on, and consequently, those two positions would work together.
Any food project? I doubt we have any right now. Anything on that? Anything on the freezer that we should?
Well, well, we just, I'm, I'm just touched base with Frank about next steps since we have that grant, we're, you know, getting that moved. Yeah, so they, they did their, their shopping thing today, and it went well. I mean, it was amazing. The kids were really enthusiastic about it. Took a ton of time. The teachers were very accommodating about having kids go down and dribs and drabs, but they had a pretty good system, you know, and I'm sure it'll get better over time and a little bit quicker over time. This is the first time that many of the kids had had an opportunity to do it. They're all pretty enthusiastic. It's like, you know, who doesn't like some free food, right? And it's all good stuff. It's not like, you know, so it's another one of those little model programs, I think, that would, you know, hopefully be sustainable. This group, this new group of parents that we have, PTO types, and others like Ellen Strong and Marie and these other people are really terrific.
Who's Marie? What's her last name?
Marie, I always want to say Teagarden, but it's not exactly that. I can look it up. It's Nathan Kim's mom. I'm right in the page.
Because that's a PTO name, parent name I haven't heard before, so it's nice to hear a new one.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Her email says, she goes by Marie Kim here officially, so that's who it is. It is Teagarden, T-E-A-G-A-R-D-I-N. Yep. Terrific group. So that's good. I mean, and, you know, it's also, there was probably six or seven people in and out that they had coordinated for the Food for Kids Group to come and help out today. It was really good, yeah. Kids loved it.
Buildings and grounds? Fact is, meeting I think next week, and the date has changed, now you haven't been following that.
Yeah, I remember the date.
Unfinished business? Just superintendent evaluation committee is meeting next week, and it likely will be the last meeting because we're wrapping it up. And then there'll be a report to the SU board, but I assume you guys all got your survey monkey in to that. I think that's the only unfinished business that we have. Is that correct, guys? New business? We did Wilson Act, I think we did everything.
Yeah.
We just have a application for 1% funds from Valerie, who's the pre-K teacher. Every year she does pre-K home visits. I imagine she's probably done them already. 12 one-hour visits, two days total per day, and rate 21910, times two is 43820. I think we all know how this works. Is there a motion?
I think we approve 1% funds in the amount of, sorry.
No, sorry, 43820.
43820 for pre-K business.
Second. Any further discussion?
Do we need to put in the motion who it's going to?
We'll do co-signing.
Probably co-signing.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Passes. All right, anything else, guys?
Can I, can we look at October meetings for a second?
Yeah.
So we have sort of a long schedule because we have our meeting with the teachers on Tuesday, the 16th. That's a Tuesday, right? That's the very next week on Thursday, the 24th, would be the fourth Thursday in our regular meeting time, but I, the 25th, I have to work that night. Is there a way we could work around that date?
And I'm out of town, so.
Okay. Because what we'll have for those meetings, we'll have the 27th of September, then Thursday the 11th, then the very next week, Tuesday the 16th.
Interesting.
Wait, can you say that again?
No, we're done.
Regular meeting Thursday, September 27th. Regular meeting Thursday, October 11th.
Interesting, I have that noted specifically, there's no meeting.
So is that the one we canceled because of the 16th?
I think so.
Okay. So we take the 11th off the calendar. Sorry about that. Tuesday, the 16th, meeting with faculty.
That's 3:00 PM.
3:00 PM.
And a regular board meeting immediately thereafter.
And a board meeting thereafter. We're skipping the 25th of October, right? What we just talked about. Can we go all the way to the second week in November, or do we need to, we need the first week of November?
I think we're good.
We can do it that.
Sergio, do you need us to commit now?
No, that's okay. It's a, that's enough out there. Evening meetings are easy daytime meetings, right?
Easy.
No, not easy.
Easier.
In terms of my schedule.
I need to come see how you guys run your house.
Oh, yeah, no. Not easy in that way.
I think that nothing in that has sort of possibly be easy, right?
Is there?
No, it's not.
Yeah. Is there anything else? Someone like to move to a chair?
It's pretty interesting.
So.
Second.
All those in favor? And thank you very much, everyone.